Good evening, welcome everyone, welcome our members of the public, welcome to Debbie Baines, our new clerk. And I'm just going to read out the meeting. That the meeting can be. Well, actually, I'm not going to read that out, I'll read that out afterwards. What I'm going to do is I'm going to say a few words about the very sad loss of Ian Kirk. And then we will have two minutes silence as a mark of our respect. So it's with great sadness that on behalf of the council, we respectfully tonight approached the tragic news of the completely unexpected and shocking death of our colleague and friend councillor Ian Kirk. And our sincerest condolences are extended to his wife and family at this tragic time. We now know that Ian was born and bred in Newmarket and went to school here. He was a true Newmarket boy. He had a successful career as contracts director for a pharmaceutical company. He joined the council in October 2019, having won a by-election. And I think it's fair to say that he immediately became a very important member of the council. He thrived as a councillor, he was very popular, he was hardworking. He was kind, amusing, incredibly pleasant, and he did a tremendous job as a councillor. We will miss him enormously. He absolutely proved what a special individual he was by the way he took so impressively to our coronavirus helpline on behalf of our residents. And he was, as has been said, one of our most tireless and effective contributors, daily helping, coordinating vulnerable residents and other residents' requests. He was a complete pleasure, we can all agree, to work with. And as been said, he was a real gentleman and we will miss him. So we would like to have two minutes silence as a show of our respect and our deepest condolences to his wife and family. So if we may, we will have two minutes silence. Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody. We'll move on now to the everyday part of the agenda. I would like to welcome everybody and to announce that the meeting is being recorded and to ask whether anyone else intends to record the meeting. No, thank you. Deborah, do we have any apologies perhaps?
No, everybody is here tonight.
Thank you. Can't quite see everybody on my screen, but I think I can see them down the side. Right, thank you. Item four, declaration of members' interest and to remind councillors of the need to keep up to date their register of members' interest and to consider any requests received for members' dispensation. Do we have any such requests, please? Thank you. Item five, to receive and confirm the minutes of the town council meeting held on Monday, the 20th of April, and any matters arising. So I'll go through these, page one, please speak up if you have any comments on the accuracy. Page two. Page three. Page four. And page five. Is everybody happy with those? Do I have a proposal for those minutes? Councillor Drummond, the second councillor. Sorry?
Peter is.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Can you see everybody, Deborah?
Yeah, I can see one, two, three, four. Yep. Andrew, how do you vote?
Is that Andrew Appleby?
Yes.
Well, that means I'm up, yes.
You've got, well, I can't see you at all, you're not appearing on my screen.
All right.
Councillor Hurst, how do you vote?
Yes, I vote to agree then, yes.
Right, great, thank you. And councillor, and councillor Holwood has said he won.
Okay. Fine, thank you. Okay, now matters arising, page one. Page two. Page three. Page four.
Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, page four, appointment of town clerk, and delighted to see Debbie Baines here with us, thank you. Good to see you. But I am concerned because the minutes clearly state that the new town clerk's starting date was to be agreed. And most people, I think, interpret that to be when the crisis was over. And there was an expectation that the Human Resources Committee would formulate a sensible plan for the handover of duties from the acting town council manager to the new town clerk. Yet this week, there appears to be a flurry of activity by yourself, Chair, and councillor Drummond, which, as far as I understand, means a contract and a start date have been agreed with the new town clerk without reference to the town council, as I say, all in the space of this last week. Now, I think and I believe the town mayor cannot make such decisions. It is the Human Resources Committee who should first agree and then present the proposals to the town council. Now, this town council's meeting every two weeks at the moment, so I cannot see the reason for this undue haste. More importantly, it isn't in the gift or indeed in the powers of the mayor to act unilaterally in this way. Can you, councillor, explain the actions of the last week?
Yes, I'd be entirely happy to. So in consultation with councillor Drummond, the immediately preceding mayor, I've followed the normal practice, the same practice that was used when our last town council manager, Bobby Bennett, was employed. And councillor Drummond showed me evidence of that being the way that the previous town council manager had been employed. I have followed the resolutions. There are minutes to say that it is hoped that the post will be filled in early May. The decision was to it was in unanimous vote with the start date to be agreed. I have agreed a start date with the new clerk, and she's very helpfully going to be having what Deborah has said she hopes will take place, a seamless transition by early May. Debbie, who you can see on your screen, is going to start off working seven hours a week, so that we won't be experiencing unnecessary expense. There was also the issue of a potential breach of GDPR, which we don't really want to go into at the moment, but that was another reason why it was obviously important to do this. The the acting town council manager also made it clear that, as she said, in fact, from my point of view, and this was written, the sooner she, that's the new clerk, can start, the better. And the new clerk is happy to start in due course. And I think I'm happy to say that we now have a new clerk, that Deborah is happy to hand over to you with a seamless transition. And as I say, I followed the the immediately preceding mayor's instructions as to how our former town council manager was employed. And I hope everybody's happy with that. We've got our clerk, who was unanimously voted on as the new clerk, ready, willing and able to start our existing acting town council manager, keen to have her start the sooner the better. So councillor Jeffries, I hope that answers your questions.
Not very well. I think councillor O'Neill has got something to say, judging from the screen.
Well, shall we finish with what you've got to say, if it doesn't answer it very well?
My point is, I don't understand the role of the preceding town mayor two years ago. He has no greater powers than any of us. And indeed, that is true of everyone on this council, including the Chair. You don't have powers to act unilaterally, and that's exactly what you've done this week. Now, we can't have this on the council. If you start acting as one individual when we have a whole council, then things can go rapidly wrong.
Well, I am the acting town council manager's line manager, I'm the new clerk's line manager. We voted unanimously to employ the new clerk. The minutes say we're hoping to have her in place by the end of May. I have followed previous procedure and I'm very happy that Deborah, Deborah's wish to hand over as soon as possible seamlessly will fit in hopefully with new Debbie starting at the end of May or beginning of June. Okay, so thank you, councillor O'Neill.
Thank you. I just think it's a joke. I think you've acted in your own interests. And obviously, the preceding mayor has done that. Excuse me, I'm speaking.
Oh, no, I'm actually running this meeting. I am the person who has actually never met the town clerk until this evening, but could you confine your comments to something sensible?
Yes, I can. And I could ask the same of you, but I don't think that will ever happen, as it hasn't done yet in your entire career. However, I think you've acted totally out of order. It does say in the minutes that you have to, that the start date is to be agreed. It doesn't say to be agreed by a previous mayor who was advised by a totally, totally useless consultant who we paid £62.50 an hour to, £28,000 to Pete Cooper, who probably told you that advice and said it was good. Now, that clown managed to put things into our standing orders that are completely illegal.
We keep off the point.
I'm on the point.
Councillor O'Neill.
I'm on the point. The point is, there's been criticism about the money spent on our acting town clerk, town council manager, who has put in such wonderful effort at getting our coronavirus response up and running. And there's been information spread around about the money.
I am on the point. Whether I have acted.
Yeah, and you haven't. And I would actually.
We are only speaking one at a time, please. I'm waiting for you to come through.
Yeah, okay, thank you. My point is, I believe you should resign because you've acted with total disregard for this council. You haven't consulted with anybody except councillor Drummond, who was a preceding mayor two years ago. Now, it's disgraceful that's happening. No one was consulted. You're trying to undermine our acting town council manager. I did have one good question. We decided in, it was decided in December, Human Resources, and resolved at full council, to change the post to a town clerk. What job title was on the
On the contract?
On the contract that was sent to our new town clerk?
Well, in fact, it was town council manager, as I discussed with Deborah, but I don't think that's a problem. I suspect that there's no problem changing it to town clerk.
So, in other words, hastily agreed contract was made up without reference to council and you managed to mess that up? Is that right?
Absolutely not.
Oh, you didn't mess up, you got it right? I thought you just admitted you got it wrong.
No, I haven't said that. And also, I'm a bit.
Oh, so you've got it right? Have you got it right? So we put town clerk on there, did you?
Shall we try and move this debate to a more sensible level?
Well, I think you should have done that before, and actually asked the council.
Councillor Caesar, can you hear?
Oh, sorry, yeah, just tuned out from another. I just feel this is very ill-timed and dumb without the spirit of agreement of the HR committee or the full town council, because you know, Deborah has done a fantastic job in an unprecedented time of crisis and we could not have achieved anything that we've done without her. And not just the coronavirus response, but also getting the town council set up with these video conferencing, facilitating move of the council staff to work from home, building all the relationships with all the charities and stakeholders and keeping us all on track of, you know, what we could do to help and what we can't do to help. And it just feels like you're rushing a handover of staff that does not need to be rushed at the moment. If the new town clerk is working reduced hours and we still have money to have Deborah as an ongoing consultant and advisor, because obviously, we are not functioning well as a council. Dismissing her so rapidly and slightly in a, well, in an ungrateful way isn't really ideal for bringing us all together as a group.
I'd like to comment on that because the fact that Deborah has said that she would, I think her words were, in fact, the sooner, from my point of view, she can start the better is something Deborah said. I'm not.
Well, she said that all along, that she's been working for us, because, you know, obviously, we are difficult to work for.
But I don't think we need to confuse apples with oranges. We have our unanimously voted in future town clerk. And we haven't made a decision about the situation with Deborah. I'm not commenting on the situation with Deborah. I am saying I have followed the rules and agreed a start date for our new clerk. If that wants, you know, if people then have a view that they would like Deborah to stay on, that's a different issue, and we can always bring that back to. I mean, I don't quite see how the new town clerk's start date being seven hours a week for part-time for the foreseeable future is something that impacts on when Deborah departs.
Okay, good. So just so long as we have an understanding and nothing, because this all happened very swiftly, and I think it it makes us wonder what else might swiftly happen without the say or the consent of the wider town council.
Well, I don't think that, with respect, I don't think that's right. What I've done is I've done exactly what was authorised in the minutes with the start date to be agreed. I'm the line manager for Deborah and for the new clerk. And, you know, we can certainly, you know, that, what's happening with the new clerk isn't actually saying what's happening with Deborah. I think it was even suggested that Deborah might stay on anyway, but Deborah had said she wanted to leave. So I'm not sure this is a conversation to be had in public. Councillor Deah.
Thank you. I just want to say, really, I think this is highly unprofessional, having this discussion whilst Debbie's sitting in on this meeting. I mean, if I was her, I'd be feeling mortified at the moment. And I wouldn't feel particularly welcome about all of this that's going on. And I think I would be worrying, what am I letting myself in for? But that's, you know, that's just my view. I just don't think we should be discussing these issues in front of her. Because Debbie, believe you me, you are very much wanted by everybody here. And I would hate you to think that this is about you personally. It isn't.
Thank you. Councillor Yarrow?
I just want to reinforce the observation that you actually don't have the powers to act unilaterally and ignore the decision made by the full council, as the point, I think, has been made by councillor Jeffries and indeed by councillor Caesar.
Yeah, I haven't ignored it. I've followed it to the letter, which is the start date to be agreed. As the line manager, I've agreed it. Councillor Kirby?
I'm just slightly annoyed that as a member of the HR committee, I was not even consulted or asked any question about this. And it just seems that you've gone ahead, done what you wanted, and not even thought about the members of the HR committee or the rest of the council. I just feel that you wanted to rush this through, get rid of Deborah as soon as possible.
Excuse me, this has nothing to do with Deborah. I've followed through.
That's the way it seems and the way it feels.
No, there's no reference to Deborah. This is.
Not, but the way it feels and the way it was done, without any consultation to any member of the HR committee, apart from councillor Drummond, who has no other power than any other member on that committee, who should have been consulted. You've just gone ahead and done it yourself, which I think is disgusting.
No, I'm afraid that's exactly what was done with our former town council manager.
Former. We are not working in the former. We are working now. Previously doesn't come into existence. We are working now. We are in council. We are supposed to be working together, not individually.
Well, we're not. I've followed the minute to the letter. So and I think we need to, we can have a meeting of the HR. This doesn't relate to Deborah, this relates to Debbie. So.
Well, I propose, well, I propose that the council honour the contract with Debbie to be paid seven hours a week. That Deborah continues as the town council manager, liaising with Debbie as appropriate, until such time as the council, that is the full council, agree a date for Debbie to start as town clerk and make that proposal.
We can't do that because.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
No, we need to wait for six months to change our unanimous vote at the last meeting, which.
No, we don't.
To employ Deborah, which we've done.
That's been proposed and seconded. Shall we vote on that now?
No, I'm not taking that vote because we cannot do that.
We need to have a vote.
Yeah, we need to vote. And I would suggest you don't try and obstruct business.
Excuse me, councillor O'Neill.
You're welcome, but please don't obstruct business.
I think we need to deal with things in a sensible direction.
But that's what we'd hoped you would do. You haven't. So it's been proposed and seconded. Shall we vote on that now? Show of hands, everybody?
Can you just clarify what the proposal was again?
It was from, it was from Andrew.
I propose that the council honour the contract with Debbie to be paid seven hours a week. That Deborah continues as the town council manager, liaising with Debbie as appropriate, until such time as the council agree a date for Debbie to start as town clerk, that is the full council.
Oh, we can't do that because we've already had a motion in the last minutes to.
I would suggest the contract is void.
No, well.
Probably void, it's certainly voidable.
Can I state, I think the minute that was agreed from the last meeting, that what the proposal that's just been put to the council, I don't believe is any, that adds to the previous minutes. It doesn't contradict it.
Absolutely. So we can vote on it. So it's been proposed and seconded. Shall we have a show of hands?
Well, first of all, hold on, I think we need to be clear what's happening.
Well, we are.
Well, you may be, councillor O'Neill. At the last meeting, these minutes, which we have just accepted, said that we unanimously voted to offer the appointment to Debbie with a start date to be agreed.
This doesn't count to contradict that. She's just confirmation and further detail.
And no contract for a town clerk has been signed. Incorrectly, one for a town council manager has, obviously. So it's been proposed and seconded. Let's vote on it.
I'd like a named vote, please, Deborah.
Can we just confirm what we're actually voting for?
Well, we're voting not to follow what Deborah wanted, which was quoted to, in fact, the sooner, from my point of view, the new town clerk can start the better. And we, and Debbie has agreed that she would be happy to start at seven hours a week going forward, starting next week. And I have followed the procedure of this council from the last employment of a town clerk.
Can I just ask one question? Can I ask another question? Did you at any time approach Deborah, our acting town centre manager, town clerk, of what date she would be prepared to leave? When deciding on what date you would approach Debbie to start?
Debbie starting and Deborah leaving appear to me to be two entirely different things. I'm well aware that various members of the town council have authorised Deborah to work as many hours as she chooses. So that was a completely different situation from the town clerk that everybody unanimously voted for.
I move the vote to be put.
And I've asked for a recorded vote, please.
Can we confirm what that vote is?
Andrew?
Question is going to be.
Am I still on, am I still open, am I?
Yes.
Go ahead, Andrew.
I propose that the council honour the contract for Debbie to be paid seven hours per week. That Deborah continues as town council manager, liaising with Debbie as appropriate, and till such time as the full council agree a date for Debbie to start as town clerk.
Well, I don't actually have a problem with that.
Excellent.
All those in favour, thank you. Just keep your hand up just while I.
I don't know what you can see, but I certainly would support what's just been proposed, yeah.
Yes, so we're supporting employing new Debbie for seven hours a week to liaise with Deborah. And what was the rest of it, Deborah?
Andrew's got the rest of it. I'm just counting, one, two, three.
Until such time as the council, the full council, agree a date for Debbie to start as town clerk.
Yeah, okay. I've asked for a named vote, please. I mean, I'm not going to vote for it, but I don't actually have a particular problem with it.
Okay, I think I think I've got everybody. Obviously, we now need to go with those who vote against.
Well, first of all, you need to go round, Deborah, and take a vote from everybody in alphabetical order. That's how we do the named vote.
Well, I just recorded everybody who's voted in favour and in that respect councillors Jeffrey, O'Neill, Fitzgerald, Death, Border, Bowen, Caesar, Hurst, Anderson, Kirby and Appleby have voted in favour.
And Yarrow.
And, oh, Yarrow, sorry, Kevin. And.
Councillor Ley as well.
Did you vote against, James? Did you vote in favour, sorry? I didn't, I didn't see your hand up. Hang on, you're muted. I'll just unmute you.
Right, I abstained.
You abstained, okay. So anybody else abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
I don't agree with councillor O'Neill on this one, Debbie.
So are you, are you voting against councillor Holbert?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else voting against? Councillor Drummond, I don't have a vote for you.
You're mute.
I abstain as well, thank you.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so any other matters arising? So let's move on now to confirm the minutes of the virtual meetings of councils held on the 30th of March and the 6th of April.
That was a previous agenda.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at your group agenda on somewhere else. Okay.
Now we've moved on to public participation.
Yes. Do we have any public participation? Would any, any members of the public like to speak?
It seems not, no.
Okay, thank you. The next item is item seven, committee meetings to receive minutes and reconsider any recommendations from the development and planning meetings on the 20th and 27th of April. councillor Lay.
There are no recommendations. I have pleasure in presenting the minutes of the development and planning meeting held on both the 20th and the 20th, 7th of April and seek their adoption.
So no recommendations, so. I'm happy to second that. All those in favour, raise your hands, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now we're moving on to item eight, coronavirus response to receive and note the minutes of the steering group meeting held on 21st of April 2020.
I'm pleased to present these minutes. We meet regularly. The meetings are attended by all our partners and I think that is a strength of the steering group and I hope they'll be received and noted. Did you hear?
Yeah, yes, we heard.
Yeah, we heard. And we need to look at the, everybody needs to be, oh, yeah. Which minute, you're only presenting the minutes of the 21st.
That's correct.
The minutes of the 7th in here.
Yes, unfortunately it's dated incorrectly. It is the 21st minutes, but dated incorrectly. I wondered whether anyone would notice.
Well.
Well done, mayor.
Thank you.
I'll teach you a trick, mate.
And we need to note the cost breakdown at the back of this, particularly since there, you know, we are dealing with adverse comment from people. And, you know, we need to all be aware that people are. Are we voting for these councillor Jeffries? Have we voted?
It's a financial update. You're receiving them. You've received the minutes.
Yes.
You're receiving an update on the finances. I can't add anything more to them. We know that it was an expensive thing to get started. We started ahead of everyone. We have been successful, thanks to the hard work of many volunteers and particularly members of this council who have done the coordinator role and the helpline roles. And that's how much it's cost to set it up. But I think it's a fantastic thing that we've done.
So we have, I think everybody would agree that we've achieved a lot. I personally am concerned about these costs. And as we know, I didn't vote for this and nor did some other councillors. So I think we need to have a regular update, particularly in light of concerns about extra staff hours, et cetera. Although I believe that we are hopeful that staff hours, Deborah, are now back to relatively normal. Would that be right?
Yes, that would be right. Although this time of year, of course, is financial year end as well. So the finance officer ordinarily works extra hours at this time of year to complete the end of year.
But other staff will be, not be working.
Well, Julie Ashton, our minute taker, is also working, doing some extra work. She's minuting the steering group meetings as well as the normal council meetings. And she's inputting data into the database as it comes in.
Can I just ask the minute taker, actually, if there are many new registrations currently? I know there were a lot to begin with. How are you finding the new registrations now? I know I'm not taking any when I do the helpline from two to four.
That's correct, Rachel. There was nothing over the weekend and I've had one this evening.
Okay, so we are hopeful that we've got almost everybody registered. I'm sure a few other people will come along to need registering. Am I right in thinking, Deborah, as well, that all the people registered have received their numbers or been sent their numbers?
Most of them have. Any that have come in in the last couple of weeks, there's been a bit of a delay. There was a bit of a glitch in our system, which has now been rectified and they should be receiving their letters in the next couple of days. So there's a total of about 635 people registered on the helpline.
Okay, that's people registered for help as opposed to our volunteers.
Yeah, that's registered for help. Sorry, no, 653.
Okay, did anybody else want to ask any questions about any of that? I'm looking around. I can't actually see absolutely everybody. So if I don't see you, could you please raise your voice or let me know? Right, item 10, events and bookings to receive an update. We don't think there is an update, is there? Yes, councillor Lay.
One of the updates on the events and bookings is that this week I have agreed in principle that provided we can open the memorial hall on the 1st of October, I have 25 craft fairs, which will be in place on the day to open up a new craft market on, a new market to help bring more people into the town.
Okay, and that's been, have you had communication with Christie, the events manager?
I have, but I've had one meeting, which she wasn't able to attend. So we are, we're ready, we're ready to look at it in detail. But as far as I'm concerned, we only need to dot the i's and cross the t's because we are, we are there or thereabouts.
Councillor Jeffries.
I just wanted to congratulate councillor Lay. I think that's a brilliant idea to return the market to the memorial hall. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Councillor Lay, do you have an update on the carnival and soapbox derby?
Item 11, so if we can just go on to item 11, soapbox derby.
Would you like me to start again?
No, just carry on.
Right, okay. The soapbox derby for the 30th of August, provided again that we can run it. We have 21 newspapers supporting us. That's the I-Lift Group and 19 magazines. And we expect 10,000 people plus on the day. And I am just looking at how we're going to park all the cars and to bus all the people from out, from the top of the town down to where we're going to have the soapbox event. I have talked to Christie about putting on the Severals, all the amusements that we would normally do for a carnival on the day before. So that would be on the Saturday. We would run almost a small carnival on the Saturday and leave everything on the Severals for the Sunday. I've made the Severals available by looking for alternative ways of parking the visitors who come to see us and getting them to the event. So we seem to be in agreement between Christie and myself that we bring to the next full meeting of the council more details on how we can run a small carnival on the 29th of August and then on the 30th of August to run the soapbox derby. So we are quite a long way down the line with that, but not, not so far down the line that we have committed ourselves to anything, except that we will bring the proposals back to the next full council meeting, I think, which is in a fortnight's time. But the one thing that we haven't done in 2020 is to allocate any funds towards running the soapbox derby. Now, in 2019, we virtually broke even. So we didn't actually need to have any funds made available for it. And I don't believe in 2020 that we'll actually need any funds. But we should be allocating funds into that pocket so that if, if for any reason we as a council need to have money in there, put aside for this project, we should have it.
Are you proposing that should be an underwrite of the soapbox derby rather than actual funding of it, councillor Lay?
I'm actually saying that we should underwrite to the tune of 10,000 the soapbox derby. But we will not be spending, we will not be spending any of the, we will not be spending any of the money prior to the soapbox itself being run, except for about £2,000.
I would like to see a better financial proposal. I propose that this matter is deferred until the next meeting so that we can have a proper financial proposal. Can't really commit £10,000, especially in these circumstances.
Councillor Caesar.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we've just literally just said that £15,000 was a lot of money for a pandemic that's affecting everyone in Newmarket. And then to say, oh, £10,000 is viable for one day out. You know, we, obviously, we made a small loss last year and that was when it was well sponsored. It had excellent weather, it had a good turnout, it was a fantastic event. But this year you've got the economic lapse. So sponsorship isn't going to be particularly forthcoming. The ticket sales are going to be low because although lockdown will probably have lifted, people aren't going to want to be in crowds. How we socially distance during this, it's, you know, I think we need to have good sponsorship lined up in order to commit any money to the event, just because this is going to be such a difficult year. And it might be, it might be wiser to skip a year and then just go all out next year.
Sarah, put that as a proposal, that we skip the soapbox derby for this year and we put it back in for 2021.
Would you put it off for that? Because I'm not saying write it off entirely now, but, you know, if we could guarantee we got enough sponsorship well in advance of it, then I think we can also still support it and just hope that we get a good crowd. But I just feel it would, might be better just to go major event next year because by that time, everyone will have the money to, you know, take the kids to this. And, you know, all those children that are very anxious about crowds at the moment will, should have got over it by next year.
And Gath would like to speak, sorry, when you're finished, councillor.
Well, I was just going to say, maybe if we could do something to drum up expectations for next year, like have a kids' soapbox model making competition or something that could still keep the interest. But, yeah, not necessarily the, the full thing.
Councillor Death, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Sarah, councillor Caesar, about postponing it for a year, bearing in mind that we have actually postponed the food and drink festival, which is later than the soapbox derby. And in fact, we're going to be doing that online rather than in person. But I agree, I just think people are going to feel very, very nervous about being in large crowds for really quite a long time to come. And it was rammed last year. And it would be such a shame if all of the effort was put into it and then it bombed because of people's concerns. So I would agree, we put it off for a year.
I didn't actually hear that councillor Caesar said put it off for a year, but I did hear that yours.
I think we should keep going with it. I'm not saying, you know, it was fantastic last year. I think we can all agree that it was a great day out for everyone and, you know.
What I'm, sorry, what I'm saying is councillor Death would like to put it off, which is certainly a rational thought. I didn't hear you say you wanted to put it off, but I was going to say that I heard the deputy mayor say that he's waiting for a proposal to put it off, I think. Is that what you're saying? Councillor Kirby wants to speak.
Yeah, I'm pretty much of the opinion that we should put it off for a year. I know, I know it'll be sad to put it off, but I just think much in the line with what councillor Caesar said. I think we're just going to be very sceptical about being in large crowds. Sponsorship will probably be very difficult. Ticket sales would probably be hard to push forward. And I just think it's prudent to put it off for a year. If the food festival's not going ahead and that's later on in the year, what does that really show the council's responsibility then? We're quite happy to have a crowd of people come to our soapbox, but we're not prepared to have them go to a food festival, which obviously brings revenue in the town. So I would quite happily propose that we put it off for a year and have a big and better one next year.
So shall we just hear from the deputy mayor, who's the chair of this, and then we can, oh, councillor Fitzgerald? Would you like to, councillor Fitzgerald?
Yeah, I'm happy to go along with, with the majority. Majority believe that we should put it off for this year. That's fine by me. So I think we'll have a show of hands of those who think we ought to put it off for 12 months.
Can I just ask if councillor Fitzgerald wants to speak or whether you're just happy to go to a vote?
I am. I wanted to say that my son and I, very sociable, he's sixteen and a half years old. And we go to, we go to all the events and the festival, yet for this one, I wouldn't take him at all. So I imagine the parents of young children wouldn't be keen to go at all.
Right.
Can we thank councillor Lay for his work and, you know, we will revisit it in due course.
Let's take a vote. We've got a proposal from councillor Lay, which I think is seconded by councillor Death or the other way around. All those in favour of postponing the soapbox derby for a year, please raise your hands.
I go with that.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. councillor Appleby?
Yes, I'll go with that.
Councillor Hurst?
Yeah, yes, I would vote to postpone it.
Okay, and councillor Holbert also votes in favour. councillor Drummond?
Have you muted councillor Drummond?
I muted myself. I'll abstain from this, thank you.
Right, okay. So I think that's, that's all but one in favour of abstention. Thank you.
Well, I'm abstaining too.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
And I didn't see what councillor Lay did. You're voting to postpone, are you?
Well, he proposed it.
Proposed it, okay. That's good. All right, so that's pretty clear. Yes, right.
Look, in light of, in light of what we've just proposed, that we don't believe that people being together in crowds is the right way to go. And that's the feeling I've had from the rest of the councillors. I would like, I would like to go back to the proposal regarding the indoor market because the indoor market will bring people together in very tight spaces around the council chamber. And as the instigator of the indoor market, I propose that we also put that off for 12 months because whether or not we're going to be allowed to. put that off for 12 months because whether or not we're going to be allowed to congregate in large numbers is debatable.
Can we go back to that or not? councillor Jeffries wants to speak.
Well, I, I think 12 months would be regrettable. One of the great advantages of the market is it's actually regular income to this council, and we may well need some regular income. Whilst I can see that October may be too soon, and none of us can predict where we're going to be or what it's going to be like in October, and therefore delaying three months may be appropriate, though starting in the winter is not a good time to start. I, I wouldn't want to go for, for 12 months delay councillor Ley, and I'm very happy to, to work with you on how we get this started and when we get it started. So, yes, review when we start it, but not, say, 12 months delay.
Okay, so we'll, let's, let's leave it for 2020 then.
Well, could I just quickly chip in? The difference there is the market, we could, we could kind of organise some sort of one-way system, social distancing, so that it isn't as packed, you know, there's no way to make the soapbox kind of not full of crowds, but in, you know, if it is a well-spaced out market and we have a free flow of people, we, we could still, you know, run it at a time when, and there's not going to be so much anxiety because, you know, they aren't gonna, you know, you don't have to kind of pack it with kids, they can be in the memorial gardens and-
So are you going to, what are you suggesting that we should-
I'm suggesting that it's not quite the same, we don't have to put it off for the full year, we can, you know, look at the October, November, December timeframe and still keep it in the year, hopefully.
Yeah, I, I would say look at a Christmas market potentially. I, I think, I think there would be hopefully an appetite for a Christmas market.
So can, can we have a proposal, a revision of your proposal councillor Ley, please?
Yes, my revision, my revision of my proposal is that we, we run with the Christmas market as organised by Christie, and that we put off the indoor market until such times as we know that we can actually have crowds coming into a, an area like Memorial Hall.
Well, surely the proposal then should be that we, we postpone the indoor market until, to revisit, say, the beginning, beginning of, what, September?
What? Twenty twenty-one.
Well, that's not what's been suggested, I think a Christmas market is being suggested.
Yes, but this wouldn't be a Christmas market.
Can I propose that we review the start of the market? In other words, we do the preparation, we look at the logistics, we look at how we set it up, and when the time is right, and we'll pretty well know that, then we can start it. I wouldn't like to put a set date on starting. I'm hoping that by Christmas, things will be relatively back to normal, and we could proceed then in the new year with a weekly craft market in the Memorial Hall. So I'm quite happy to review it.
Yeah.
Okay, so did everybody get that? All those in favour of the proposal and the seconded by councillor O'Neill, raise your hands.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. councillor Appleby?
Yeah.
councillor Hurst?
Yes, I've raised my hand, but it obviously hasn't registered.
Well, no, because you're on the phone, Warwick, so we can't see you. And councillor Holbert has voted yes, that's unanimous, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item 12, finance, presentation of the budget and income and expenditure report. We've got Cathy here, are you going to do these Cathy?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so hi everybody, you've got in front of you my analysis of 2019-20 budget against the income and expenditure figures. And you can see that on the front page, I've put a summary for the different committees to say what the under or overspend was. It's fairly self-explanatory. That particular part of it underneath, I've taken the, basically the whole budget was £40,008,890 underspent, which is a good result, and then underneath I've put a section there where we have to take out the financing policy underspend and also the very small development and planning underspend. There's also then three items which were budgeted for within that year to save into the EMRs, earmark reserves. So the town centre regeneration, we had budgeted £8,000, the clock tower project. And if that's still intending to be going ahead, that needs to come out then to go into that specific reserve. The same with the memorial garden canopy, the £7,700 is the additional items, the additional amount that we need from this year to add to the existing £10,000, which we put aside last year. The whole project, as we discussed a few months ago, is about £17,700.
Sorry?
Sorry?
No, no, I, I thought you'd finished, carry on please.
It's also suggested the underspend on the human resources committee should be put aside in a new earmark reserve for that, to be used for, for that purpose, for HR matters, wages, salaries. At the bottom there, I've put down what resolution, what, what suggestions I'm asking for, as I've put in the middle there. So that would be something that I'd be asking you to suggest, to propose. Behind that, you've got the individual committee figures that come from the realtors system, which match up with my summary at the front now. Anybody's got any questions?
Who would like to ask some questions? councillor Jeffries. You're mute.
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 Sorry, you're unmuted now, go ahead.
I, I, sorry Cathy, I, I should have asked you this before. I don't really understand why when you add up the underspends and, and that included an overspend on finance and policy and an overspend on development planning, is that correct?
Yeah.
Why you then take it off the underspend in your second table? That, that seems perverse.
These are the figures that I'm getting out of the system. It occurred to me, that phone question actually occurred to me.
Well, sure, I think that needs looking into.
Yeah, I, I'll talk to realtors tomorrow about that, because as I was doing this, although we did go through this, when they did year end, it did occur to me that it was a bit, and this is the first time that I've done this specifically, because Bobby was doing it before, but I will, I will look into that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Questions? Deborah, will these all be coming to the requisite committees in due course?
Well, I think the, the decision about what to do with underspends and overspends needs to be agreed by full council. I don't know, I think there's enough slack in the timetable for end of year that we could actually defer a decision on this particular resolution until the next meeting on the 18th of May, which would allow Cathy a time, time to investigate the question that's been raised by councillor Jeffries. But in terms of agreeing what to, what to do with underspends and overspends, there has to be a decision by council overall. But individual committees will be, once they, once they start to meet again, will receive copies of their end-of-year statements, I'm sure.
I suggest we postpone the resolution to the 18th of May.
Is that okay Cathy?
That's absolutely fine, all of this can be done, I can carry on with the new year, which I am doing now.
Okay.
No, no rush on this, and it'll give me time to, it's difficult to contact realtors at the moment, so that'll give me time.
So we're, we're postponed this until the next meeting, and what are we doing with item C, calling a meeting of the finance and policy working group?
Well, that, that is, was specifically to look at the impact of income or loss of income on the budget for the coming financial year. So we could, I mean, so in a sense, they're two separate things. So the item about underspends and overspends is, relates to the previous financial year, and the proposal to call a meeting of the finance and policy working group to review the impact of income on the budget for the coming financial year is sort of two separate things. But that's not to say that the policy and finance working group shouldn't have an oversight of what's happening with end of year, so we could postpone that meeting until after the 18th of May.
Do people want to postpone that meeting? Cathy, are you trying to speak?
I was, yeah, thanks, I was just going, so we haven't actually discussed B, but that was Virens' request to make out of this year, but as you noticed, it did include the £10,000 for the soapbox. So again, that's, it's kind of all one, that, that's sort of changed now, so it'd be good to get a whole new report together.
So do you want to bring that back to the meeting on the 18th?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, and should we then call this finance and policy working group meeting on the 18th? Should we decide when we want that meeting? On the, on the 18th, should we decide when we want that meeting?
I would say that it should be not long after the 18th, because I think it's quite important that we look at how our budgets have changed as a result of this crisis. We do need to know where we are. So I don't mind a two-week delay or a three-week delay, but it must be sooner rather than later.
So is there any problem with calling it next week, for instance?
Yeah, I can't see any reason to delay it, to be honest.
Okay, so we could call it to happen after the development and planning meeting next week, if people are happy with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll propose that we'll call that meeting. I don't actually know who's on the finance and policy working group, but I'm sure we've got it written down somewhere.
Yeah, and that would be a working group meeting rather than a formal meeting of, of a committee, so, you know, we don't have to have the three clear days notice, and that will be reporting directly to the next meeting on the 18th of May.
Okay, well, that seems very satisfactory. Is everyone happy with that? All those in favour, raise your hands please. Have the date please.
I think it's the 11th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Monday, this is the same day as the development and planning meeting, but immediately afterwards. So shall we say seven o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, as a working group, we could just follow on, can't we?
We can, but we probably ought to give people some idea, because not everyone's on it.
Yeah, but not, and not everybody on the working group will also be on development and planning, so they have to be two separately scheduled, so maybe.
Okay, fine, thank you. Right, item 13, public space protection order to respond to the consultation on whether to extend the existing public space protection order. Would anyone like to speak on this? councillor Drummond?
Thank you very much mayor. So we set this, or we approved for Forest Teeth, as it was at the time, to set up a public space protection order for us in September 2017, and it ran to 2020. It really came about prior to that because we had quite a night time economy in town, mainly at the nightclub, which is now flats, but the police would still like us to continue with this. And it basically means that in the mapped area, it's essentially illegal to be consuming alcohol in the streets, and that an officer can actually make somebody surrender any alcohol that they are drinking on the streets, and if they fail to do so, they would be subject to a fixed penalty, £80 fine. I propose that we continue with this, as I say, the police would like us to, but we do have to let West Suffolk councils, families and communities, cabinet member, Robert Everett, know that we want it.
So Jeffries?
Yeah, I second that. The area includes two areas that have been a concern, which is our own pavilion, that's included in it, and there were problems with St Mary's churchyard during the summer, so, and that's included. So yeah, I think we must continue with it to prevent large groups drinking in those places.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so we'll just go to a vote. All those in favour of continuing with it? Anybody not in favour? Okay, so that is unanimous, thank you.
Well, I'm assuming councillors Appleby and Hurst have voted in favour as well.
I'm sure they'll speak up if they haven't. Okay, item 14, whether be crossing. Do you want to do this update Deborah?
Yes, so we had a meeting with, a phone meeting with the Miro Golden, the barrister, and as a consequence of that, it was agreed to seek a further, a further extension to the deadline for receiving, to set, for preparing and submitting our statement of case. So I, and/or a delay to the inquiry itself. So as requested, I submitted a request to defer that, and they've come back and agreed a further extension, the statement of case from the 5th of May, or 4th, it was either today or tomorrow, until the 26th of May, and the barrister has confirmed that that would be sufficient time for her to then prepare a statement of case, and all other parties' statements to be submitted by the 9th of June. So Rachel Wood's intending to do a lot of work around interviewing people and attending libraries and things, so we'll have to see whether or not she's able to do the work she needs to do under the current restrictions. The, the, the member of the rights away team who, from the planning inspectorate, who I've been communicating with, indicated that the inspector would review the position when further guidance is published, and he, he's indicated he may hold a telephone or video conference to discuss the best way of moving forward with the inquiry, which would happen between the 12th and the 18th of May. Also, as part of that meeting with the barrister, it was noted that we would benefit from the services of an expert witness, particularly around interpreting historical documents, in, in particular enclosure acts. And she gave us the contact details for somebody who might have been able to help, but unfortunately, because she'd previously been involved and supported the Ramblers, the Ramblers Association, she felt that her independence as an expert witness could be questioned, so she's recommended somebody else, who I've just received an email back from, and she has indicated that she would be able to attend on the 28th of July. I've also asked her to provide an indication of fees, but she would need to see the evidence and details of the case and, and to know more about it in order to be able to confirm what her fees would be. And she, in consequence of that, just in the last hour, the barrister has responded and said, said she was conscious that we do not yet have our statement of case drawn up, so I'd recommend that you send through to Rosalind a copy of the county council officers' report, a copy of Mr Smy's statement of case, a copy of Network Row's objection statement, so that she is then in a position to, to give us a quote. Obviously, this is, will be in addition to the barrister's fees, but the barrister feels that we would have a much better chance of, a much better case if we could have a proper interpretation of these historical documents, which we will be relying on.
Okay, and so it goes on, but it's very important that we make sure that we resist this potential closure with everything we can muster. So I, I know that is something people all feel very strongly about. Right, let's move on to this traffic regulation order, instead of the draft traffic regulation order for the market. councillor Drummond, yeah, you please speak.
Okay, thanks very much. I, I would like that we, I propose that we support this traffic order. It's for the market. At the moment, there is an order in place anyway, this just kind of reinforces it going forward, and it does also solidify the market having returned to the high street. So I, I think it would be very sensible for us to, to support this. It, it just basically says if we object, I would like to think we don't object, and if we do respond, I would just like us to actually support it, please, thank you.
I'm happy to second that. Does anybody want to comment on it further? Okay, so all those in favour of supporting, please raise your hands.
I agree.
Yeah.
Henry?
I agree.
Warwick?
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
I agree, obviously.
Yes, thank you, Peter.
Unanimous, thank you. Item 16, the West Suffolk Council Services Service Level Agreement to Note All Areas of Work Except Hanging Baskets Will Continue in accordance with the Service Level Agreement. Did anybody want to comment on this? Do we need to vote on that? No, we're just noting.
No, it's just the noting.
Okay. Item 17, Severills Cricket Pitch, again to note the start of pitch preparation has been approved at no cost of the council.
They haven't actually started work on site and I'm just still waiting for the paperwork from the contractors, just, you know, proof of public liability and health and safety, you know, risk assessments, et cetera, prior to start of work on the pitch, but I'm staying on top of that.
Health and safety to note the risk assessment's completed. Any comments on these, anyone? Do we need to, or we just need to note these, I assume?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're noting those. Police seem to receive an update on the operation to manage antisocial behaviour in Newmarket. We've got a report here explaining that fortunately, the antisocial behaviour has been dealt with in a positive way and is now not the same problem that it was last year. So would anyone like to comment on that? Councillor Drummond?
Well, it's very good news and I wonder if we could send a letter of thanks to the police for dealing with it. They don't often get thanks.
I think that's a very good idea. I'd be happy to second that. Anybody not want to send a letter to the police? All right, so we have a proposal to send a letter to the police thanking them for dealing so well with the antisocial behaviour from last year that carried on to this year. So all those in favour of doing that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody not want to send a letter? No, okay. So we will need to send it to Mark Shipton with a copy to Ben Van. I'd like to look at that, Deborah, if I may, because I've been liaising quite closely with the police.
Yep.
Thank you. Item 20, Correspondents to Note the National Perspanment of the VE Day. Which is all rather sad, it's postponed till 2021. So we'll note that. Date of the next meeting, annual town council meeting on the 18th of May. Prior to that, as we've discussed next week, we've got the other, the one meeting and the task force. Okay, thank you very much. I'll close the meeting. Good night, everybody. Thank you for attending.
Good night.
Thank you very much, Mr Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, David.